At seven, oh. We're ready? Okay. At 7:07, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Village of Bartlett, Counties of Cook, DuPage, and Kane. Please call the roll.
George Coziel.
Present.
Joe Vano.
Here.
Bob Bacaro. Guy Papa. Michelle Suarez.
Here.
Charlie DeVoe.
Present.
Mike Weirden.
Here. You have before you the minutes from the August 6 meeting. Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
There needs to be a change.
Okay.
I am not listed as being absent.
Whoa.
From the August 6 meeting.
Okay, so we need to amend that, okay. Is there a motion to approve them as amended?
Motion to approve the minutes as amended.
A second.
A second.
We can't have you.
We can't have me.
The minutes.
Second.
Joe approves it, Bob seconds it. Any discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Abstain.
Yes.
Yes.
Abstain.
After abstain, yes.
Abstain.
Yes. Did we have four on that?
The abstentions go with the majority of the vote, so I believe we do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. We have three items on the agenda tonight. I know this is not the politically correct thing to say. We want to protect you from the COVID-19 virus as much as we can. However, this is a public meeting that is being recorded, and we need to understand what you are saying. So occasionally, when people come to the microphone with these masks on, their voices get muffled, and we can't understand. And if we can't understand it, perhaps the tape is not picking everything up, and they need that for the minutes. So I'm not going to order anybody to remove the mask, but if it's your case, it's in your best interest if we understand what you are saying about your case. If there are people who are taking chemo and are, have a weakened immune system, if you wave your hands when we're talking to somebody that we can't understand, we'll hold on while you get to the door, because we don't want anybody to catch anything. But please realize that we need to understand you. Okay, the first item on the agenda is case number 20-09, 1070 Dartmouth Drive. Are the petitioners present? Okay, please, if you're going to testify, please come at least reasonably close to the mic and raise your right hand. Raise your right hand. Do you soundly affirm that the evidence you're about to give is only the whole truth? Okay, go ahead and present your case.
First of all, I'm the owner of the property, 1070 Dartmouth Drive. I've been there for five years, and.
You need to state your name for the record.
Cesare Lesnyevsky.
I'm sorry, I didn't say that.
Cesare Lesnyevsky.
Okay.
May I continue?
Yes.
So I've been there for five years now, and the main reason for the six-foot fence is a privacy one. We are on the cul-de-sac where a lot of people go to, where a lot of people walk by, because there's a bike path in the back of our yard. There's also school that a lot of, you know, parents pick up their children, you know, driving in, driving out. We have a dog, you know, people playing with the dog, picking it up, taking it out, taking it in. And, you know, for the past five years, we are, since we lived there, I don't remember having a barbecue there, because especially during the weekend, there's over, you know, I'm not joking, about over 100 people walking by, back and forth, and it's like, you know, everybody's looking at you. So that was the main reason. And then another reason is the solar installation that we want to do. The HOA doesn't approve panels on the roof, so we have no other options but do a ground mount. That, well, they don't have any, they don't have any laws written in the book for solar panels or anything like that, so they told us to use satellite as an example. So it says that you cannot see a satellite from any street. So basically, we can't put solar panels anywhere. So the only other option is the ground mount. And what else?
If I can add, so during our last meeting, we had agreed to some revisions where we would change the location of the fence. We would want to be two feet away from sidewalk. So that's based on, this revised plan is based on those things that we discussed last time. And we also moved the fence that's facing the actual bike path, the entrance to the bike path.
Talking about the bike path going over to the path on the gas pipeline right away.
Yeah, that's correct. We moved that over eight feet. So now people will be able to see and look around the corner. That was one of the things that people were saying, that, you know, if a fence is going to be so high, we're not going to, you know, be able to see if somebody's lurking behind the corner. Moving that eight feet, as we discussed last time, allows you to see clearly, you know.
And there's also a tree that we will have to cut if we put it any closer. I mean, if we put it six feet, then we will have to cut the tree down. So we prefer to move it even farther, so we don't have to cut the tree down over there.
Now, you were talking about the Homeowners Association. And I realize they have different laws and things, but you're not able to approach them for a hearing or anything like that to, or a variance?
I would definitely do that. It's been, to say the least, very hard to get in touch with a lady called Peggy, I believe. Peggy, yeah. I was trying to, I left her messages in the beginning when she, in the beginning, she did return the call, and she gave us a booklet, she did, right?
Yeah, she gave us all the rules and regulations.
And after that, when we wanted to pursue, you know, maybe having a hearing, we've been playing, you know, phone tag, and.
And I would like to add that, as you see there, there is some solar modules facing, facing east. So that's fine according to the HOA rules, because it's not.
I'm sorry, what's facing east?
There are some solar modules on a roof there of the main building. That's actually over the garage. That's fine according to the HOA rules. But we would need solar modules facing south and west in order to have enough that we could offset 100% of our energy use. So that's why a ground mount is necessary. And we use the highest wattage panels for the ground mount, so it doesn't take up a lot of square footage to minimize that.
Any questions from the board?
I have a two-part question. How far is the fence going to be from the bike path, from the property line along the bike path? And how far away will it be from the property line along Dartmouth Drive, or Circle, whatever it is?
The bike path?
Yeah.
The property line is in the middle of the bike path.
Right.
So that you know that.
Yeah, but how far will the fence, the proposed fence, be from that property line?
The property line, it's eight feet.
And along the drive?
Along the street, they're bringing it in two feet from the sidewalk, so it's one foot into the property.
One or two feet from the property line?
It's one foot from the property line. It's two feet from the sidewalk. The sidewalk is typically a foot away from the property line.
Add something. If we do more than two feet, two and six inches, we will have to cut another tree here on the corner, because it's right in the.
Right in the middle of it.
Right in the middle of it. So we will have to cut the whole tree down because of that. The maximum we could move, I measured, was about two feet and eight inches, and then you would just have to cut some branches along, you know.
It just wouldn't look good.
It just wouldn't, I don't know if it would look that great. Because there's a tree right in the.
Would you go on the other side of the tree?
Yeah, but then we would have to, that would be about 10. There's a, you know, the tree is fairly big, so we would have to go very far in to go behind the tree. It's like, it's not a regular tree. It has triple, what are they called? It's not, it's not, not branches. It's not a single.
Trunk.
Trunk, but a triple trunk, which is like in a different direction. So it's a, it's a weird one. But a beautiful one, too.
I have to make a comment on the submittal here tonight. If the tree or trees was an issue, it would have been a real good idea to have that indicated on the diagram. I understand your concern. And I go back to earlier this year when we came to the decision that if you wanted a six-foot fence, you had to be 10 feet from the property line. Four-foot fence could go up to the property line. I have a real problem with this six-foot fence sitting one foot into the property. We changed the ordinance to make it easier for people to put up a fence if they wanted the taller fence, move it back further from the sidewalk.
So there is, on the plan there, there is a 10-foot offset from the property line. So you'll be able to see, if we were to do that, where the fence would be. And as you can see, it would be right up against the solar panels, shading them completely, and, you know, probably cutting down the square footage available to us by, I don't know, 10, 15%.
And the property will go down in value. I was talking to my realtor that if I do that, and there's no yard available to play or, you know, have at least a little bit of yard there, the property value will be diminished a little bit.
When I look at this proposal, what I see is a change from the original, which is approximately the size of this notepad. I don't think that that's noticeable along the property. And again, I go back to what I'd said earlier. I believe that the six-foot fence closer to the sidewalk than 10 feet in is not what we want to see in Bartlett. That's why we changed the ordinance, to make it easier for people to put fences up. Or foot fence at the property line back to 10 feet. At the 10-foot line, you could put up a six-foot fence. When I read that this was going to be reviewed, reworked, and re-presented here tonight, I thought that there might be something a little bit more than one foot.
So can you explain your, can you please explain to me the first statement? You said that if the change is based on this versus the prior permit is not much of a change, is that what you mean?
Looks like it was brought in about a foot.
Yeah.
It doesn't, it doesn't meet our standards. We pretty much demand a 10-foot going back. We didn't used to allow six-foot fences at all in the side yard. And so we're not very agreeable to something like this. This atrociously flies in the face of our standards, and we don't like it.
Yeah, we were just following the previous discussions that we had here a month ago.
And that's why we gave you a month to try to work it out with the village staff. And I am very disappointed. You have done a very poor job at being able to convince us of the need for it. I think you need to put more pressure on your Homeowners Association and not be so flagrant, flying in the face of the Village of Bartlett and our standards. I feel insulted by what you have brought before us.
I'm sorry that you feel that way. When we were, you could probably look into the meetings from last meeting. This fact that we would want to have the fence 10 feet from the property line because it is six feet was not brought up by anyone. I was not aware of it.
It was what?
I was not aware of it. It was not brought up by anyone.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
No one present a month ago at the meeting has raised or let us know that we would have to move the fence 10 feet away from the property line in order to have a six-foot fence.
The 10-foot is where the zoning code allows it, is the 10-foot setback. And I had explained it before that originally, prior to January of this year, the fence would have been, had to have been set back 25 feet. That the zoning board approved, recommended approval of a text amendment to allow a six-foot fence 10 feet from the property line. That's what you're asking a variance for.
Yeah, I understand.
They asked you to work with staff to bring the fence in more than what was shown on the previous plan. I talked with the homeowner. I told them that I thought five feet would be a good compromise and would probably be more palatable to the zoning board. But he informed me that he just wanted to do one foot because he wanted it pretty much what his proposal was originally.
Yeah.
Except the part where the eight feet is moved, because I heard that was the biggest issue, safety issue, where someone said that it would be, someone would be afraid to walk by there if they have a, you know, tall fence over there, you know, someone being behind it. So I thought, you know, moving at eight feet, we can even move 10 feet if it matters.
I think the issue is more in the corner side yard along Dartmouth Court, which is what I was explaining and why I was encouraging you to move that one at least five feet from the property line.
Which, which side, I'm sorry?
I'm talking about along Dartmouth Court, along here. When we spoke on the phone, I suggested you move it back five feet to kind of show the zoning board you were working with staff and compromising on the 10-foot setback.
Got it.
The concern wasn't so much along the bike path setback as it was along the sidewalk.
I'm pretty much in agreement with Kristy.
The only problem is, is it going to be five feet? Is it going to be enough for the panels not to be shaded?
It would, it would be anything closer than that, yeah.
It's going to have the look of a fortress over there. We're not concerned along the back Nykor property easement, because that's the backyard and that's that path. It's so far from the property line, it's not an issue. But we are concerned about the one on Dartmouth.
And just wanted to mention, I was not here last time, so I might not be, I'm not sure, some of the things they said, that was said last time. Wasn't here on a few things, but.
Yeah, I have not, I have not heard at all about the five or 10 feet at all.
Did you get any calls from anybody in the last month?
Did I get any what?
Any calls from anyone in the last month?
No, because they weren't required to re-notify since the public hearing was continued.
Right, right.
So we did update the date on the sign, but we didn't have to republish or resend out notices.
As I started to say, having looked at the proposal from last month and then the one this month, I was disappointed because I didn't see enough of an effort to try to meet us somewhere in the middle. And I'm not going to throw a number out. I'm not going to say four feet, five feet, six feet, but one foot's just not enough. Something else might have gotten our interest and gotten us concerned enough to be willing to make an exception less than the 10-foot point. But the one-foot point, that's not what we want.
We have a village staff that works very hard at trying to see what the zoning laws are and tries to work with people. And we try to go along the guidelines that we have. And compared to what we had even a year ago, it has really been liberalized, because there was a time when we hardly ever approved things over three feet. And we were wanting the four feet to be more practical. But, you know, when you start getting six feet, it's going to draw attention, make people wonder what's back there that's, that might be of value. And it could even be an attraction for attempted vandalism, thinking there must be something more valuable back there than, than what is there. And we don't like to have something so close to the sidewalk where somebody could be hiding behind there to throw rocks at passersby, let's say, walking at night at eight o'clock when it's dark. Or even if the fence had, like, like a board-on-board and has spaces in there, and people could be watching to jump somebody. Now, they're not likely going to jump a six-foot fence, but they could still hurl projectiles over it to try to hit somebody passing by. It becomes, it becomes a sight and a safety issue.
I have a question. Is there, we talked about a four-foot fence so far and a six-foot fence. Is there any guidance for a five-foot fence or five and a half feet? Does that make a difference?
We would have to republish, because the request was for a six-foot tall fence.
Okay.
But in reality, you're still looking for a variance.
Correct.
Yeah.
I have a concern with regards to safety of the kids that are being dropped off, picked up by their parents. Having a fence that's that high, six feet, so close to the property line is a concern for me, for the safety of the kids. Because the parents are not really going to have the line of sight that they need towards the school.
Any other comments before we open it up to the public? At this point, I shall open the meeting up to the public. Does anybody in the audience have anything to say? Any further discussions or motions from the board? George?
As long as we're talking about the height of the fence, I think from an aesthetics viewpoint, on the cul-de-sac, on the opposite side of the cul-de-sac, someone's going to have to look at this six-foot stockade wall that's going to be there forever. And it's right up to the sidewalk, one foot, two foot, it's right up to the sidewalk. Again, that's another reason I think this six-foot fence in this proximity to the property line is inappropriate. And as Mike said and others have said, we modified the rules, I believe it was back in January, to make it easier to get a higher fence further from the building. We took it from 25 feet, I think it was, to 10 feet. That seemed like a good idea. You want to go closer to the property line? Put the four-foot fence instead of the old three-foot fence. Again, an improvement. This, this is not, this is not trying to meet us halfway and come to a better conclusion.
I think we would be more open on this if you were along Bartlett Road, or Sterns Road, or Route 59, or some major, highly congested roadway like that. But you're in a residential area, and even though that's considered your side yard, it has an awful lot of frontage for people even across the cul-de-sac, as George pointed out, looking at. We don't have the height restrictions on, for example, bushes along there as we would with the fence. Anyone else?
So am I to understand that if we did bushes instead of a fence, that that would be, that would be something that we could do?
If you did what?
If we did, if we had bushes instead of a fence during that portion, that portion of the fence, that that would be fine?
Well, I'm guessing that if you're worried about people coming in and destroying the panels, you probably would want some type of fence there with bushes, maybe hiding the fence, I mean, bushes on both sides of the fence, I don't know. For aesthetic reasons. I think when, when people see honeysuckles or other flowering ones periodically, they're more at ease. They probably like that better. I'm surprised there aren't more people here that would look, be looking at this, that don't have a problem with it. Now, sometimes people have their neighbors sign something saying that they have no objection to it, or we, the staff gets letters in the mail or emails that talk about their opposition to something. And we try to take all that into consideration. But we're talking about a change that is relatively permanent, because this fence is probably going to last for years, whether you stay in the house or not. And it's a pretty big deal. It's something that is in your face. And it's, it's just too close to the sidewalk for something that high. Anyone else?
Yes. I like what George is saying, you know, meet us halfway, five-foot fence, something in between, 10-foot setback, the two-foot setback. It's just not conducive. I've dealt with another village that wouldn't let me put up a fence somewhere in my yard. So I put up Bailey's red dogwood type of bush that grew to be about five to six feet high. You had to keep it trimmed, but it was much nicer than, you know, a blockade-style type fence. So I would encourage you to take a look at that and come up, try and come up with some other options.
As I recall, you were doing material that would last long. It wasn't wood, right? It was.
That's correct.
Which I commend you for that. I think that, I like to see stuff like that. Because a lot of these wooden fences, in about five years, they start deteriorating, and people don't take care of them.
Yeah, we don't want it to be an eyesore.
And if you guys, if, and if there's any particular, particular items that we can use to make it even, to make it look better, we would. If it's, you know, if there was anything that would make it look like it's a bush, we would, but it's unfortunately, that's, that's the only thing we.
Well, you have an odd-shaped lot.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, and it's an unusual circumstance. But I think you need to put more pressure on the Homeowners Association, perhaps, to change some of their policies. This one is a big one to swallow after we have made huge changes in the ordinance to try to accommodate people. try to accommodate people.
If I could just point, if I could point something out, if Christie could put up on the screen the height of the solar panels, we want to be careful because it appears the solar panels are about five feet, five inches high. So maybe a six-foot fence is the most appropriate at this location, correct?
Yes, that was the main reason for the.
Okay, so I, I think we're, staff is trying to look at more of a compromise on the location, not so much the height. Okay?
I think it's important.
Right.
As stated, because if you take the fence down in height, there's a strong probability that you're going to see the edge of the solar panels, and that, I think, would be really in poor taste. I'd also like to say that, as I mentioned aesthetics, Mike mentioned aesthetics also, if the fence was moved further back, you could have some planting of vegetation, some bushes, you don't need it the whole way, but you could put several clusters of some bush vegetation that would break up the view of the fence. Instead of having this massive wall, you have some vegetation to soften the view. Again, that requires the fence to be moved further in.
We will take all of these noted points and work with our HOA and come up with a better plan. If we could get a continuance for another month.
One more month?
Please.
Yeah, I just, I, I mean, I want to point out, I'm looking at the minutes, and we did discuss, you know, setting it back, but our conclusion was, you know, work with staff to come to some resolution on moving it back. And when staff indicates they started with five feet as a compromise, you know, that probably would have had a good chance of us, you know, going with that. It, it just, as George said, one foot in addition to where we were looking is not much of a compromise.
We, and we under, even though we're not big on a six-foot fence, we understand the need for it with five-and-a-half-foot panels there, you're wanting to hide them from the typical person passing by in the sidewalk. But, and even if you got the fence back there a little closer, they would be less likely to see them. A tall person can see over the six-foot fence, especially when something is farther back. I think unlike the plan commission, we don't have the authority to negotiate something with you. I'm not sure what we could do with continuing because of the publication.
Just don't close the public hearing.
If you leave the public hearing open, we can continue it.
Right.
Okay. Would that, would that be fair to you? We, we could leave the public hearing open, which means we, I, I don't think you're going to get a passage tonight from the comments I've heard.
I get that.
We're willing to work with you, but you need to work harder with staff to come up with something that's more palatable.
Just to clarify one thing, the main problem is the, the offset of a cul-de-sac.
The fence is too close to the sidewalk bordering the cul-de-sac.
Cul-de-sac, okay, the, the rounded area.
The rounded area.
We're not.
Which you have a weird-shaped lot, we realize that.
Whatever.
Concerns along the sidewalk.
Yes.
Also, we're also talking about a.
That's straight.
That's straight, but the bottom piece as well.
Yeah, it needs to be back from the sidewalk.
I'd like to see a wider field of view from the cul-de-sac through the bike path area towards the school than what is proposed here.
And I, I have a question, just to kind of gauge your point of view here. If, if, if the fence was five-and-a-half feet and the solar panels would be at a five-foot height, would that make that easier?
I think that's still a little too close to the sidewalk.
Oh, no, but still moving it.
I don't think the big discussion is whether it's a six-foot fence or a five-and-a-half-foot fence.
How much you want to move it?
That's not the issue.
Done.
My opinion is, is that in this case, a six-foot fence is much more appropriate, as Roberta indicated.
They have a pretty good idea of what we're looking for. And I think if you work with them a little harder and try to bring something that's more palatable, you will get a positive recommendation. We don't have the final say-so, the village board does, but in the vast majority of the cases, they go along with our recommendation, because we've done the homework and take a look at it, and we know what the village ordinance is. We're not trying to make it harder on you, we're trying to make sure that it's palatable to the people that have to look at it or might be walking along the sidewalk.
Understood.
So at this, so we need a motion then to continue this? Okay, do I have any motions to continue this meeting?
I would make a motion to continue this till next month.
It's been moved by George, any discuss, any seconds?
Seconded.
Seconded by Charlie, any further discussion? I think this is in your best interest if we do it this way, because if we, if we denied it and then we went to the board and they denied it, or they could overrule it, then you'd have to try to come back with a whole new plan again. So this might still save you a couple months' time. All right, please.
I have to add one comment, that this is rather unordinary for us to do something like this. So we're, we're willing to work with you, you have to be willing to work with us.
Great, thank you, we appreciate it.
Okay, we, we need a roll call, don't we? Do a voice vote, okay? All in favor of this one?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay.
My wife, my wife had a question here, she was asking if, if, if we, are we here, are we, she wants to know if, if she understands correctly, that if we move it by five feet on the cul-de-sac and the bottom part, would that be considered as a good compromise?
I, I think for the most part.
I think different people are going to have different opinions.
Yeah. Run it past the village staff and work with them, and I think we can get a positive resolution for you.
You mean that we can resolve this without meeting?
I mean, the, the ordinance is 10 feet, we're willing to maybe look at five feet, try to work with you, we're not asking you to drop it from six feet to five feet in, in height. We don't like six feet, but we're willing to look at it because you have a unique situation. Am I, am I speaking fairly?
Yes.
Iffy.
As I say, different people are going to have a different opinion on.
What guidance would you provide?
I want a wider field of view for the parents that are dropping off kids and picking them up, I think that's, that wall is a problem.
So I think if you come back in and you change the location of the fence and possibly provide some photographs showing where the fence would be on your property, maybe get like a six-foot tall stick or something and say, this is where it is, this is the view you have, if you're at this location, information like that, that's what they need to base their recommendation on.
We can actually buy a piece of original fence and have a section of a.
So if you could provide something like that to give them more information, because they do go out, they visit the sites, and if you work with me, we can try to see if we can figure something out for next month.
Okay, and then, and are we talking about, again, if five feet, if we're talking about five feet, is it from the property line or is it from the sidewalk?
Typically, it's from the property line, that the variations are from your property line. So right now, the requirement is it's 10 feet from your property line, which is 11 feet from the sidewalk. So we're probably looking at about six feet from the sidewalk, which is five feet from your property line.
And I just want to put it on the record, you could get a building permit tomorrow if you set it back 10 feet.
And then you have no yard.
Let's put it on the record.
And then you have no life. We can definitely do that, yes, ma'am.
So we're, we're just telling you what your options are.
We understand, yeah.
Work with them, they'll work with you with the options. Okay?
Okay, thank you, thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Now, my computer just went off.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is case number 20-10, 260 South Western Avenue. Petitioners present? Please come forward, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly affirm the evidence you're about to give is only the whole truth?
Yes.
Do we have the mailings, the picture of the sign and the newspaper, okay? Mark those exhibits A, B, and C. Go ahead and state your name for the record and address.
My name is Katarzyna Selvick, and the address is 260 South Western Avenue.
Okay, and go ahead and present your case.
So we bought a house with the pool existing on the side of the, of the yard, not in the back, and when I tried to call, because there is a boiler that, or heater that goes to the pool, to find out when was it built, they couldn't even provide me with that information because they said that it's been.
I, I believe, to help you out, I believe the pool was built there before we had a zoning ordinance that had setbacks for that type of structure, correct?
The pool has been there since, the oldest aerial photo I could find with the pool was from 1978. So it was built sometime prior to 1978 and after 1940. So that's the range, there wasn't, there weren't really restrictions. Previously on the aerial, you can tell that the driveway, there was a long driveway that kind of made a turn.
So somebody before you owned the house, put it there and was not required to move it in. We're not talking about somebody that built it there last year defiantly to the zoning laws.
I owned the house two years, so.
Two years?
Several questions?
Yes.
Is the pool in good condition? Is it serviceable?
Yes, because when we bought the house, we put $5,000 in to make it work, and it works. And it's in grout, it's concrete, we just had to fix it a little bit, patch it and repaint it. And we have a fence, it was like, oh my gosh, not a wooden fence, it's just like the wiret fence, and we put in like the privacy tape in it, so people don't even know that there is a swimming pool in there, and we have a gate that is locked, so nobody can even enter there without the key.
I had to drive by three times to figure out that there was a pool there. Fence was very well developed and designed.
When I look at the aerial view, there's the red box, and I'm assuming that that's an indication of three lots?
No, actually, it's only two lots.
Is this one lot or three?
Right now, it's currently two lots, it's an odd-shaped, one lot's like a C, there's a little strip that kind of comes down south, so there's a C-shaped lot, and then there's a rectangular lot in the center.
And the buildings are divided into basically two lots, because garage is on two lots.
So from the aerial view, if I'm understanding it correctly, the pool is sitting in the, and I'm going to say the south lot, a portion of it, and in the north lot, there's apparently some of the property that's drifted over into, into that lot also. I'm not quite sure I understand how this works out.
Something appears to be crossing the property.
It's not accurate.
The way this is set up, so the pool's here currently, if you look, you can tell it's a C-shaped lot, as it is now. See the strip, see how there's a small strip to the west of this parcel? So from the aerial, because of the thickness of the line weight, you can't tell that that's a C-shaped lot, but she's going to be re-subdividing this, which is before the plan commission, and with that, the pool will be completely on the northern lot. So that lot lines are going to change from what you see now.
Okay.
So the new lot line will be south of the existing pool and the fence, so it will all be on one lot.
Right now, this is housekeeping that we're bringing into compliance.
Correct.
Okay, so then that middle lot gets adjusted to properly include the pool, no problem?
Correct.
And it will meet our current setbacks.
So that, that then becomes one lot, if you will.
So there's one large lot, if you go to the plan subdivision, there's one large lot which will have her current house and the pool, and then she will be able to sell lot two and, or have a house built on lot two.
Okay, that, that's perfect.
So how was this discovered, because of wanting to?
Subdivide.
Subdivide.
Right. So and if we see something that's a variation requirement during that process, we make people bring the properties into conformance.
Right, right, okay. Any other questions? Okay, so we need to open this up to the public? Anyone in the public have anything to say? Any motions or further comments?
I would make a motion to pass a positive recommendation to the village board to approve item number 20-10, the, and I'm going to mess it up, Sir Wick, re-subdivision.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, I'm going to close the public hearing portion, is there a second?
Second.
Moved by George, seconded by Charlie, any further discussion? Again, this is a routine housekeeping thing. Please call the roll.
Michelle Suarez?
Yes.
Charlie DeVoe?
Yes.
George Coziel?
Yes.
Joe Bano?
Yes.
Bob Picaro?
Yes.
Mike?
Mike Wearden?
Yes. Okay, we shall pass on a positive recommendation to the village board, stay in touch with Christie to find out when it appears on the agenda. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next on the mind, the agenda is case number 20-12, 630 Golfers Lane, are the petitioners present?
The petitioners are not present. You should have in your staff report a memo from me stating that they were unable to attend. What you, we are asking is for you to open up the public hearing, get proof of the notification, and then make a motion to continue until the following meeting next month, which would be October 1st at 7:00 PM.
Okay, so we need to open the meeting before we ask for that exhibit?
Yes.
Okay, at this point, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone have a comment? Yes. Okay, so now, are there forms up there for?
I believe there's form, if you can fill out a form after you speak, I don't know if there's any up there or not.
And we don't have to swear you in. Go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
I'm Michael J. Stapleton, and I'm Deicy Pruden's son-in-law, and we're here together to publicly ask for, the board did not approve the variance because of some things I want to read, okay?
Because of what?
I want to read a couple of things.
Okay.
Could you speak up a little, please?
Yes. I'm in opposition to the request for a variance on the setback of the rear yard variation requirement, namely for the view from the next door deck at 626 Golfers Lane. This will significantly reduce the view when looking northward. We have family gatherings there quite a bit, and the houses right now are so close together, it's like a Chicago bungalow, it feels like that when you walk between them. And looking at a wall would be just detrimental to our family gatherings.
You said that 626?
626, yes. So please do not grant the variance for that. The matriarch, matriarch of our family is right here, and she's all we have as far as a major gathering place for our family, and we have lots of parties and. place for our family, and we have lots of parties and get-togethers on that deck. And I think she has a couple of words she wants to say, too.
My name is Feisy Pruden. I live at 626 Golfers Lane. I live about 10 feet away from where the proposed addition is going to be built. When I moved there 30 years ago, you paid a premium to live on the golf course. They gave us 20-foot yards because they said we didn't need larger yards because we have all this open space in the golf course, and that's fine. But now I have a neighbor that moved in two years ago, and they want to build an addition. Now, this is 10 feet, maybe less if you count my deck. Right now, if I look north, south, it's a beautiful tree-lined path. I can see our neighbors' decks almost all in a line. You can wave to them, I can even converse with some of them, and they're going to put a wall, which will be what that addition will be. Will be a wall and a roof and a couple of platform stairs going around to the front of their addition. I didn't bring their pictures. I understand the meeting to decide this is going to be called later because the petitioner is not here.
Correct.
So...
So I would suggest that...
Anything else I have to say? I'd rather wait until he's here.
You may do that.
So, I mean, you are going to continue this, right?
We're going to continue this meeting till next month. We meet the first Thursday of the month.
The first Thursday of the month?
Yeah, do you have the date?
October 1st. October 1st.
October 1st.
Here.
Yeah, all right. Well, then, I will see you then.
Okay.
Thank you.
May I ask if there's anything we might bring as far as visuals or...
I mean, if you have, for us to see it, like if you're able to take pictures and pass it out and turn it in to us for, as an exhibit, to see what you're talking about, the view when you're standing on the deck?
Yes.
I mean, something like that, we are, we are interested in hearing what your point of view is and why.
Okay.
Well, I have all the plans and the notice and some pictures that I took I would like to bring.
Give us copies, because if they're turned in for exhibits, that's part of the case.
Public record, so if you're bringing any photos, we need a copy of it to maintain as part of the public record.
Understood. We've already sent in several emails from the association members, and I assume you've received those already.
I have not personally received anything. I haven't received any email correspondence. Are you sending it to village, to village staff, or are you sending it to the Homeowners Association? Because we're completely separate entities.
Aren't you K. Stone?
I'm K. Stone, I haven't received anything.
I sent out...
And your name is K. Stone?
Yes.
I sent that out this afternoon.
You didn't receive one from me, from him, my daughter, and any of my neighbors?
What time did you send it?
I sent it at 3:00.
Bartlett.org.
V. Bartlett or Bartlett? It's V. Bartlett.org.
Well, then, that's the mistake.
No, the email address was K. Stone, Bartlett.org.
It's V. Bartlett.
Like village, the V.
V. Bartlett. So that's why, that's why I didn't get it.
One letter.
Yeah, yeah. So, so if you send it, then we'll make copies. If you send it to me in advance, we'll give them copies of the information.
Well, there's a lot of...
So, as it turns out, this may be a blessing that this is getting delayed a month for you.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
Okay.
Is there a good time, like, I mean, before to get your information or posted?
We send the staff report out the Friday before, so anything like that last week of September, try to get things to me probably mid-September so that we can have, we can have it included.
Picture and stuff?
Right, but if you, you can bring things to the meeting as long as you're aware that we need to keep a copy of it.
Sure. But it's more helpful to y'all to get it.
Correct.
Okay.
Make sure she fills out a sheet.
She just asked me a question.
No, 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 the other...
Can you fill out one of the witness forms?
Oh, you'll fill out a form?
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, so we need to approve...
You need to make, you need to make a motion to continue the public hearing.
Let's make a motion, entertain a motion to continue the public hearing.
We'll make a motion to continue.
She'll moves. Second?
Second.
Second is Joe? Was it Joe?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the ayes have it?
That, that's it.
Okay. Old business, new business, well, I don't, I don't think I've ever been in a meeting like this where we continued two items, like...
It doesn't...
Sure, bye-bye. I've sat here 41 years, I've never seen this. Old business, new business, obviously, we're having a meeting next month.
Yes.
Will anything else be in the agenda?
No. It'll be these two items.
Okay. Any motions to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
George moves, Michelle seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We're done.